Okay, I'd like to call the meeting order for December 1st, 2021. We'll start with a pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we're the town administrator, weekly update.
Good evening. So I apologize, I'm working off a list on my phone because of our last minute copier issue, so.
That's okay.
First, wanted to let you know that if you recall, several months back when we were in between code officers, one of the people that took the job temporarily convinced the town to purchase iWorks software for a decent amount of money that has a lot of things that it can offer the town, but we haven't had time to really look into it. Jason has started working with the company because we already paid for it, so we've got to move forward with it. He's done some training, and him and the secretary are starting to create some forms and trying to get it together to hopefully get it in some sort of production.
Have you got like six, seven grand for that?
Yeah, the initial setup was, was high, and then there's a yearly-
Doesn't cost that much to keep it going?
No, no, there's a yearly maintenance fee, I don't recall what it was, but it's the building up of the product to make it, you know, tied to act, and I can't remember all the details that Mr. Kilpatrick sold it to the town, but-
Yeah, well, that'll log good features, I think.
Yeah, no, it did, especially for the outside person and the contractors, so.
Right.
Just wanted to know that we were working on that, we hadn't forgot about it.
Awesome.
We've been having some trouble with the alarm company over the la- the alarm over the last two weeks. They were finally able to come out today. We've got a pole station that keeps showing a trouble signal, so they were finally able to come out today, and hopefully it'll be the last 3:00 AM call that, that we get saying that there's a problem. Last time we met, I gave you the lawn care and asked you to review it and determine if you wanted to go back out for bid. We did speak to the contractor, and he indicated that he would honor the same price, so it's really your discretion of whether or not you want to go out to bid or award it for one to three years, revisit it after the next selectman gets elected. It's up to you.
Did we put out to bid the last year?
The last time we put it out to bid, we gave it for three years, so.
When was the last time we put out to bid?
Would have been in 18, 18, he got it from 18 to 21.
I have no problem.
And then we got one bid, one or two bids, I think.
Right.
Yeah.
I'd like to stay with who we have, and-
Yeah, I, you know, I think be fair to the contractor, so we can do it year to year, we do that.
Okay, so we'll just, so want to make a motion to award it to Ham's Property Service. It was for $4,700, and that'll be good. If we can make it through a calendar year, because he does do a lot of fall cleanup.
Yep.
All right, we'll add that to old business if it's okay, so you can make a motion.
Okay. So, just need to make a motion that we are going to award the-
Yeah, under old business, we'll add it.
Okay.
So you can do it then.
Yeah.
A reminder that we are scheduled to meet with the town of Shapley and the York County Sheriff's Department tomorrow at 2:00. We had some trouble getting a meeting that worked for everybody, but it looks like we finally have, and it has been posted properly, so 2:00 o'clock here at the town hall. Because the contract is a public document, and we're not, we don't deal with negotiations piece or anything, it is open to the public.
Yep.
You don't have to allow them to participate, but the public can come.
Yep.
Just an FYI, because I got an email from Mr. Gore that they moved the candidates night to the school, just informational for the board.
Okay.
The rec committee has been very busy, they have passed out at the school and also available at the office, basketball and cheer signups are now available, and they also have the tree lighting this Saturday at 5:30.
I see the tree go by the other day on the ramp truck.
You saw it go by on the ramp truck?
Yeah.
We got somebody.
We, yeah, Kim got it up, and Will and Adam were awesome, they got it put up in place and-
Perfect.
Got the pipe in and everything, and I don't think we drew too much blood, they did good.
Good, good, good.
Thank you guys for doing that. Um, let's see, we have, just informational, that the fire department was able through Maine EMS to get the ambulance service license renewed for another year, so that's, they've come through in the emergency technician level, paramedic, everything is passed, and the ambulance itself passed, so we're all in compliance for that. We received a notice on November 23rd, which was right before the holiday, this is your first meeting though, but I did send to you, and I think I spoke to both of you, that Seth McCoy Trucking and Escavating sent by certified mail a public notice of their intent to file a permit by rule with Maine DEP for a wood waste processing facility at 2491 H Road, and there's information that people can file comments with the public for, looks like 10 days from the date of that. Did have some conversations with code enforcement who looked into the file, and it looks like he needs to go back before the planning board for some conditional use, so the state's been notified that it is pending planning board, and I think he might be on the agenda tomorrow night, so. I have for you, expense summary reports, I just want to go through, these are printed from the treasurer, so if we were in December, we would be where we are in December, so we are six months in to the fiscal year, so as you go down and look at these different accounts, starting with, you know, general government, the, obviously the gym, assistant municipal management, kind of go down through, you're at 50% of the year is kind of where you're at, so the easiest way to really review these is to go down through the percentages spent and look and see if things jump out at you. You'll see a lot of things still, zero liens and things that we just haven't done yet. Overall, and you're looking at the, like, the governing body, you guys are at 42%, municipal management, we're at 49.7, that tells you the amount spent, elections is at 18%, all of your salaries should be right around the same, 43%, land use is at 30 because of the change of staff, fire rescue, 40% that they've spent, communications is at 49.49, District One's surface thing is at 92.84, so.
District one.
Good thing we're on camera, because, excuse me, keep going through those numbers. It's the alarm.
It's the alarm.
Not to jump around, but we, I do need a back, we need a backup for, so Ed was the backup contact for the alarm, so happily share my 3:00 AM calls, every time that goes off and we're not here, they call you at home.
Yep.
So I need to put one of you on.
I'm the closest, I guess.
Generally, they're going to call and say there's a troubleshooting, it's not an emergency, but they, they'll call anyways, so I can add you. Moving right up to number one, David.
All right, there we go. What least if you-
All right, so, Flat Ground, it's only at 19, obviously we haven't done much there, stockpiling, public works, transfer stations at 42%, so everything, donations is at 100% because remember, you authorized the treasurer this year to pay them all out once after tax time, so that we didn't have to break them up, so those won't get hit again. APAT, I mean, everything looks like, um, the generator is at 64%, I don't know if we have any outstanding bills on that, but, so nothing's negative and nothing's over the area, so it looks good, but something for you to review in more detail if you'd like, and reach out to Michelle if you have any questions.
Okay.
And then just a update, Acton residents are always so kind and wonderful and always waiting for the Christmas tree to be posted with the kids that we have adopted this year. We have eight kids that we've taken on, two of them had deaths of immediate family members this year, and then we are also taking in eight seniors, so.
Yes.
Tree is up, I know it's not the prettiest looking tree, but it's up, and the tags are out there if anybody's interested. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yep, I told him yesterday. Make a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second that, all in favor?
That was with adding the lawn care under old business?
With adding, yes.
Yeah, add, yeah, we gotta add that in, so.
Under old business B. Lawn care. Minutes of the last meeting, actually, we're not going to do those tonight.
Table those?
Yeah, we need to table them, I just, I haven't gotten through them yet, so.
Been quite long. Okay, where are we here? Department, Department Head, Committee Chair Updates.
Department Heads, Committee Chairs? No.
Okay, and as we skip down to old business, salt bids.
So, Southern Maine Regional Planning is doing their absolute best to get somebody, they'll give us one of the cog prices, she says to give her one more week, the worst case is that we do have the price from Granite State for 68.23, which is about $10 more a ton than anything in the cog, but because we didn't participate and put our, our tonnage in on time, but she's asked for one more week, I talked to the guys this week, and they're going to need some, but they feel like they're fine for one more week, right? And then, so by next week, if we don't have, we'll have to sign something next week.
All right.
Um, I guess we're going to go B, lawn bids.
Do you have any paperwork on that, or?
Yeah, so we will ask you, Robin, to submit us something for 21, 22 years, something official I can have, and that the board can sign, so.
All right, so we're going to make a motion to award the lawn care bid to Ham's Property Service.
For 40.
For one, are we doing a one-year contract?
For the amount of?
For the amount of $4,700.
I will second that, all in favor? Okay.
All right.
Should we initial, oh, you, we gotta wait for-
Yeah, we're going to get it, so I'll bring it up for you next week.
Okay, we'll go down to new business here, Freedom of Information Request.
All right, so we didn't meet last week, so I have a couple to go over with you, I think that majority of them have been completed. All right, so I've got them in chronological date order, I think, so, so most of them start out with accordance of mani- freedom of information, but I will skip that reading. So the deed of the town-owned property located on Covewood Drive in the town of Acton, the property was Tax Map 144 Lot 9, this is from Mr. Donahue. We, I went into Trio to get the book and page for that property and wasn't there, called O'Donnell and Associates, spoke to the assessor, and he says, well, we have an easement over that property. I don't know that we, Town of Acton actually owns it, he recommended that we get a legal opinion, so I had Lenkowski look into it, and this is his response, it's going to need some further action from the board. So, "Good morning, Jennifer, as you requested, I have attempted to ascertain whether the Town of Acton owns the above referenced lot, I have concluded that it does not. I found a public easement deed from Albert LaValle to the Town of Acton dated September of 98 and recorded in the registry. The deed grants an easement to the town for the public use of 13th Street and Covewood Drive from 109 to the easterly side of Malsum. I've attached a copy of that deed. The property will ultimately, the property which ultimately came to include the Covewood development was a 60-acre parcel acquired by LaValle from Rosenfield in the 60s. LaValle conveyed the remainder of the Rosenfield parcel to Robert LaValle Incorporated. I am aware from a prior unrelated title search that LaValle Incorporated became ARL Timberland Incorporated. I searched the registry records under LaValle, LaValle Incorporated, and ARL Timberlands from the date of acquisition, and did not find any instruments by which the Town of Acton could have acquired the fee in the Covewood or Shoreland area located on Map 144. In short, the town has easement rights in Covewood, which I understand was accepted as a townway, but the fee interest in Map 144 Lot 9 would have remained with Arthur Kelly, then Timberlands. The records of the Maine Secretary of State indicate that the Timberlands has been dissolved. Again, based on prior unrelated title work, I believe that ARL Timberlands disposed of all of its real estate holding prior to dissolution. Further research will be required to attempt the current owner." So, in talking to him on the phone, in addition to this, it sounds like the land was moved around from a few different parties, and this piece was just kind of left over, he's, he has a good idea of who he thinks might own it and a resolution, but certainly-
We've got to be taxing somebody for that piece of property, aren't we?
No, it's listed as a Town of Acton.
Yeah, so we, we-
So we want him to continue, yeah.
Yeah, definitely, if it's not, yeah.
It's, I mean, on the map, it's located, it's listed as Town of Acton easement.
Does the easement go right down to the water?
Yes, according to the map.
So if the easement goes right down to the water, then people can go down there?
Yeah, you have an easement, yeah, that piece isn't up to question.
Well, no, I'm just, you know, okay.
So I will contact Lenkowski and let him know, and I did send this legal opinion to Mr. Donahue, so he'd have it and knew that we were working on it.
All right.
So next one on the, also on the 19th, made from information, a copy of the file marked Tattle Street, the town has, that he's previously viewed, and like an estimate of how many pages were contained in the file, where it was pretty extensive, he actually came in and we were able to solve this one, and give him copies of what he was looking for. Next one on the 20th, a copy of the statement of selectmen read aloud by the town administrator of Acton, Maine, in the executive session, after the executive session of the selectmen's meeting on November 15th, this was regarding the transfer station on the 20th, this also has been completed. The next day, in accordance with main frame of information, I would like the tax rate for the years 2004 through 2011, and the lawyer fees and list of lawyers paid in 2010 and 2011. Those seven years of tax rates and the fees have also been sent to him. The next one, although not listed as, as the other ones start of freedom of information, I'm not able to answer, and I don't want something to go unanswered when the email comes to me, so I'm looking for your help on this one. This one comes in on the 30th. How much does it cost to maintain 13th Street in the, in the winter, plowing, sanding, et cetera? How much does it cost the town to leave 7th Street, drive through Shapley to get to Lebanon and plow and sand? So there's actual questions there, so I'm not sure if it's something the road commissioner's going to help us figure out based on mileage, or how we would answer that.
The only way you could figure that out would, you'd have to break it down per mile, by mileage, which is just an average, because only one road in the Town of Acton has an actual account for its own road, that would be Flat Ground, the rest of them are clumped into a one account, so there's no really possible way to figure exactly what it costs, so you could give them an average, but all you're doing is getting an average.
So we know what the road commissioner's hourly rate is, we know what truck coming to zooming, you know?
Yeah, but they go in different times, they don't go in, you know, it's not like they're set on a set schedule when they go in, they might only hit that road once or twice a storm instead of four or five like some of the other ones get, so there's no way to go to an actual, exact cost of what it takes care of that road, you're only going to get an average.
Okay. I'll communicate with him and see.
Clumped in with the whole general snowplow budget.
Right, the, okay.
We, you know, we don't go and say, okay, well, we spent three quarters of an hour on Sandstone Road, half an hour on the hopper.
But the guys might have an idea of how long it takes to plow that road?
It's almost absolutely impossible to figure that out.
Okay.
Am I right?
Yeah, every storm's different, you don't know, I mean, conditions getting to a road could take 10 minutes to get down a little on the road, it could take a half an hour depending on the storm, it could take one pass down there, it could take three passes, you don't know, every storm's different, so, every storm requires different, sometimes you just plow it, sometimes you put a pair of down and plow it.
Who's going to speak, I was going to say?
No, not in that.
I meant Adam, I was going to try to get Adam to the podium, but.
Yeah, no, I'm good, we're all set now.
Okay. Uh, this one on 12-1.
But if he wants the average, well, the, you know, we can take the mileage, plural, which is, I don't know, I can't remember exactly what it is.
Well, like I said, it didn't list as a freedom of information, it was, we were corresponding back and forth about Covewood and 13th Street, whether or not, because once he, when he got the information that Covewood, you know, that we didn't own that piece, you know, he believes that's a reason to stop plowing 13th Street, and I did-
It should stop, but-
Well, I, I mean, I gave him the opinion that I thought that the town stood on, but nevertheless, so it was more of a response to the my last, so I'm not sure if he's really looking for all that, but we'll certainly check with him and get him the averages if he is. Okay. Uh, the next one comes, in accordance with main freedom of information, a legal opinion from town lawyers as stated in the meeting minutes of December 9th, 2020, legal minutes from Maine Municipal as stated in the meeting minutes from December 9th, 2020. I did review the tapes, he also included some screenshots in the calls that I had with Maine Municipal, these were regarding COVID, I believe.
What was the dates?
December 9th of 2020.
December 9th?
Yeah, a year ago next week.
A year ago?
Yeah. I don't have any emails from Maine Municipal, 99% of their responses are via telephone. They have 500 municipalities, and it just normally, unless we ask them for something in writing, so all I had to tell them was that I didn't have it, and it was what they told me verbally. In accordance with main freedom of information, this one came in today as well, the opinion stated in the selectman's statement letter read aloud on November 15th, stated that the Maine Municipal opinion is that the town could vote on an ordinance that superseded the state rule, this was regarding the transfer station, the statement that we read indicated that the town, the board could, if they so chose, go to the voters and ask them for an ordinance to supersede, to allow that position to stand.
Right, ask the voters, yeah.
Again, I got that same opinion, you know, we had that conversation with all three lawyers, they were all verbal though, and I shared that with him as well today.
Is, is, is this the same individual?
They're all from the same individual. And that's all I have on that one.
Okay, we're all set with that. North Star Planning Agreement.
So, North Star Planning is the planning company that our code enforcement officer of many years actually brought in to help the planning board with large product, projects, ordinance review, and anything else that they might need. They haven't been used a whole lot, you know, since Mr. Sevigny took over, we've reached out to them for opinions here and there, there is a budget line for it, because they're starting to look at ordinance changes, he does want to bring them in. With that being said, North Star presented a contract to the town, a letter of agreement, which they did several years ago with Mr. Paul, I reviewed it, it's pretty much identical, there is a typo in the planning board meetings as far as the time, so we'll have that fixed. Compensation is really the only change that I was able to come up with, everything went up $10, their principal planner, their planner and their associate planner went up $10 each. And travel time is billable at one-half normal billing rates plus mileage reimbursement and IRS rates, and it's approximately an hour and 15 minutes and 60 miles, so. Jason knows that, you know, he uses them at his discretion and as needed, it's, you know, he's had some conditional uses, he's had, you know, a few different things that he's been able to get through without them, he's got Mr. Demers and Mr. Lenkowski that's kind of sorted through them, so.
Yep.
But he is asking the board to sign it, however, there is a typo, so if you can verbally give permission to approve those rates, I'll have a contract for you next week, and I ask that because they're hoping to have him here tomorrow night to start the ordinance reviews.
So just make a motion to accept.
Accept it with the typo changes?
So accept it with the typo changes.
And this is going to be effective from June 30th, 2022?
Effective through June 30th, 22.
Effective immediately through June 30th, 22.
Okay, so effective immediately through June 30th, 22.
Second that, all in favor?
All right.
Okay, see, we're going to go to appointment.
So this appointment is for the Saco River Corridor Commission, the position actually expired in November, it's taken us a little while to get it on the agenda because they weren't aware that, so we had two members on there, we had Mr. Crespe and Mrs. Vannell. Mrs. Vannell chose not to be reappointed, Mr. Crespe is interested in reserving, however, he is not a Maine resident, and took a little time for them to determine if he could in fact serve on the corridor. We went back and forth, they don't have any concerns with it if the town doesn't, he's a waterfront property owner.
Right.
And has served on in the past, he's interested, so it's your call if you want to reappoint him.
I have no issue with reappointing him, I mean, honestly, at the end of the day, I mean, as long as it benefits the Town of Acton in some sort.
I mean, the fact that he's willing to, willing to serve, I mean, we've got so many committees with open seats right now.
We, we have nothing that says he can't.
No, no, we had them look into it because it's there. Nope, they finally emailed us back and said that they were all set with him, as long as he was a property owner in Acton.
All right, well, I'll make a motion then, that we accept this certificate of appointment Title 30-A MRSA 2602 to Charles Crespe of Marblehead, the state of New Hampshire.
Does it say New Hampshire?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I could have typed wrong, just to make sure.
Marblehead, the state of Massachusetts. There being a vacancy in the position of the Saco River Corridor Commission, the selectmen of the municipality of Acton do in accordance with the provisions of the laws, the state of Maine hereby appoint you as a Saco River Corridor Commissioner, regular within and for the municipality of Acton, such appointed to be affected, effective until November 1st, 2024, given under our hands this first day of December 2021.
I'll second the motion, all in favor? Okay, um, you want to do public comment?
Sure.
So we'll do, we got an executive session, so we're going to skip right down to public comment first, are we getting any public comment?
I just want to set the record straight on a few things, that I've been through a lot of the, as you know, I got a lot of the warrants and stuff from 2004 through 2009, and I looked through all them warrants, and I couldn't find any warrant from 2006, Article 8, anybody voted down to stop maintaining the private roads, for the record. Also, the MMA opinion from December 9th, that was for me, because I made a stink about you people, the town, the selectmen, making an emergency ordinance without taking it to the legislative body, and-
You talking about the mask mandate?
Yeah.
Okay, well, just that.
Continue on.
So I, I would think that if you base your opinion on something, on a lawyer's opinion, you're, you're defending your position from a lawyer's opinion, you should have something more than hearsay, because if you don't have something in writing, that's hearsay.
Well, what's hears, what's hearsay?
The lawyer's opinion.
On what? On the mandate?
Yeah.
You talking about what the state, Governor Mills mandated?
About the lawyer's opinion that you don't have a record of is hearsay.
What are you talking about?
I'm confused.
That says what these people said, she has nothing in writing of what they said.
So, let me, let me-
Okay, so what you're saying is you want it in black and white?
You're putting the town in jeopardy, and you're going to get sued.
Let me, Jeff, let me catch them up, because he's not following.
I'm not following at all here.
So, okay, so in December of 2020, when we had the conversations about the governor's mandate, so the governor puts the legislative orders in that we're required to follow, we called Maine Municipal to find out if we in fact have to follow these, if the extra conditions that we gave the individuals, you know, extra hours outside of the transfer station, the different things that we offered, and I don't have them memorized in front of me, we were talking about a year ago, if, if we were following the governor's order correctly. It was a verbal conversation, I mean, we were, so what he's saying is, he believes that you changed, you made an ordinance.
You didn't change any ordinance.
You were following the governor's-
You made an ordinance.
No.
We did not make an ordinance.
We didn't go in front of, we did make an ordinance.
You have to vote at the town meeting.
January 20th, I brought it up, January 20th, when I stood up for you, and we had the big argument about you can make it, the same thing, you can do the same thing that Sanford did, and I sent you the email, whether you saw it or not.
Yeah, I, I, I saw it.
What Sanford did was made an emergency ordinance, they did the right thing.
They got a town council, they can do that stuff, we can't.
Yo, you can, but-
We cannot, we, we can't change an ordinance, we have to, the only way we can change an ordinance is the town meeting.
Well, there you go.
We can change a policy.
You did, you can't make a policy like that to restrict people.
We make policy.
Not for the, not for the people, you can make policy for your employees.
We can make policy for the employees in the, in, in any town building, don't, okay, anything else, anything else, anything else.
No clue.
Let's not get into a fight tonight, let's just, yes.
No clue. So, another time I said that during the plowing in all this about 13th Street, going up to Covewood, everything from the lawyers was based on the property at the end of Covewood, it wasn't based on that the road was a town road, so, Dave, this is my time, please.
No, 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 no.
Let's try and be a little courteous.
No, I'm not, we got-
Well, I'm sorry about the three minutes, we also said that when she handed you the property on 34th Street that the town owns, and the easement that the town owns, you denied it, and said, no, we never accepted that, but as she showed you, as she-
Never accepted what? No, 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 you can stay right up there, you can verbally tell me, I don't need your-
Jim, may I have it?
All I know, my frustration-
Bouncing around, slow down.
That's a system, okay, that's a fire apparatus.
What about it?
And I still think that the town has a, has the authority and the right to go and keep that clear, for fire and, and for fire safety.
The, the fire department is supposed to be doing that.
And I thought you had met with him and everything.
Yeah.
So what is-
Jeff's saying to keep the road to keep it clean.
What he, what he thinks is because we have a system and system down there, that we're responsible for the whole road. What he thinks is because we have a system and system down there, that we're responsible for the whole road.
You're trying to pull on Thirteenth Street, because you own the property.
No, that's not the same at all. You were turning things upside down. The Town of Acton voted in nineteen seventy-four to take over that road, then they tried undoing it in two thousand and eleven or twelve. Yes, they did. Yes, they did.
It was voted down. It's not a town road.
They voted it down to discontinue it.
No.
Me, okay, yes, I was at that meeting, you were not at that meeting, I was at that meeting.
You got your nose and everything, Dave, but I can read the records. The records showed around that.
You're reading whatever you feel like reading. You're turning things the way you want.
I see the records, Dave, it's simple. I know how to read and comprehend.
Did they not, did that not, not pass?
If you listen, instead of flapping your lips, you'll hear what I got to say.
Nothing's gonna get done if both of you stop. No, stop point you two, okay, both of you, stop.
Okay, you're bringing up stuff that's been being fought over for the last fifteen years. Everybody's.
Straighten it out.
It's been straightened out. We've got a letter from M M A and our lawyers saying that thirteen, that Covewood Drive is legal.
These roads here that you took by prescription, they still aren't recorded in the registry of deeds. To, to, to lay out.
That we know.
The road, it still has to be registered in the registry of deeds, Dave.
Sure.
It's the law.
No, it's not the law. We, we've got our legal opinion, okay? I, I know you got your degree and all that, but we've gone through this over and over, and I, for years.
You're wrong, you're wrong.
Sit down, please.
You're way wrong.
I've been saying for years.
Don't start me from talking, because if you violate my First Amendment.
Go ahead, get your lawyer like you threaten every week.
Yeah.
Okay, we, we've got a legal opinion, I've wanted to post it on the wall. I've said every year, I wanna post it on that wall for a reason, 'cause there's a legal opinion on Covewood Drive, 'cause every two years, somebody.
You don't own the road.
Okay, we have a legal opinion from M M A and our lawyers on Covewood Drive.
So, why doesn't that?
Be quiet, you're not at the podium, shush, okay? We will, we will get that, can we get that?
We, yes, I can, I can.
I would love to have that, so we can read that at the next meeting.
So, he has, I mean, he's confirming, he's seen it.
Okay, then, I don't understand what the problem is here, okay?
He doesn't agree with him.
But because he doesn't agree with it, doesn't mean it's right.
Different roads differently under the same circumstances. It's equal rights under the law, which is what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be fair across the board, and they're not.
Mr. Donahue, you're not at the podium.
We're done.
Well, I'm sure they can.
Done. I'm sure they can, okay, and we all can. We're at, we're at a point here where we've gone over this for fifteen years now. We've come to the same conclusion every year. And the Covewood Drive thing, that is, I think there's two examples in the state of Maine, and that is one of them. There's two roads where there's a private road you gotta cross over to get to a
No other way to get there.
Public, uh, public access, okay? And we've had our legal opinions over and over and over. This is a dead issue, okay? Now, you're, and I don't want you to speak unless you're at the podium, okay? Now, it's my time. On, and what, what I'm having a difficult, the diff, the frustration I'm having is Tattle Street, nobody from Tattle Street Road Association has come up asking us to take over their road. Shush, 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 I am speaking now. Okay, shush. They're only a fraud because you don't pay your dues, okay?
One at a time, one at a time. You want, you wanna be heard, and he must be.
It's public knowledge. Sure you don't. So.
It's nothing to do with us.
But at the same time, nobody from Buzzel Road has come up of late that I know of. Nobody's, shush, I am speaking.
No, fighting for the road state.
And, and all these roads are, at this point in time, they are happy with their agreement. They all got their road associations, they're all happy. We've got one individual is not happy with it. We got our lawyer's opinion stating that this is what we legally allowed to do, and what we're supposed to be doing. Okay, and, and, and yes, we have one vote that we did not. Shush, I am, I am speaking. We have one vote back in, well, the Article forty-one, is that Article forty-one?
Article forty-one that didn't pass.
That didn't pass, and there was a reason why. And all the selectmen from then on, which was way before us, okay? Nobody turned around, did anything different, and if, my question is this. If we, if we turn, no, I'm not asking you, I'm asking Kim. My question is, what do we do here? Do we turn around and put that on like they did before and make the adjustments that should have been made at the meeting? And what happens if it fails then?
Well, I'm not sure that you can, based on Lenkowski's.
No, I know we can. I know we can.
They're already town roads.
So, we're just spinning our wheels.
They're already town roads.
They were taking my prescription, according to him, prior to it, so he says regardless of what would have happened to that.
So, we'd just be spinning our wheels by throwing a warrant article on, so I, I.
Do we know why they put that on?
I know exactly why they put it on.
I know, but they're.
Okay, if you looked at, if you looked at the list of roads. Okay, there was a bunch of roads that were listed, then you had roads like North Shapley Road added to it, Lakeside Drive, and all these other ones, and there was an amendment made back at that meeting. The amendment was made at the meeting to shorten up Buzzel Road to a point, 'cause there's something, you know, they thought there was something fishy going on. Then you started adding, you know, North Shapley Road, which nobody was, nobody had been maintaining that for years, okay? It was just, so when they saw that on there, I think the people decided, you know what, there's something fishy going on here? No, instead of making amendments and saying, okay, we're just gonna take this off, that off, and that off, and we're just gonna prove the ones we know that we've been taking care of and the ones we should be taking care of. And, so, shush. So, I was there at that meeting.
I, I was too.
No, you weren't.
I was sitting in my living room, watching the tape.
At this point in time, I'm not gonna invest any more time.
Fine, the injunction's coming.
Good. When, when the injunction comes, fine, and we'll go somewhere with it.
I'm gonna make a motion, because we gotta get this done, to go into executive session.
Is there any other public comment?
No, we have.
Anybody else wanna talk? Sorry.
I think there is a, oh, oh, we got people leaving.
Are you coming up or leaving?
Oh.
Good night.
Night.
I don't see any more public comment.
All right, so, we're gonna, yeah, make a motion to go into executive session, four oh five, six A one, personnel issue.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Should I say that?
You can, I mean, I mean.
Transfer station.
Yeah, that's what we're discussing.
All in favor?
Oh, yeah, I'm in favor. Let's go.
Okay.
This one, figure it out.
I don't think I need this stuff. Do a here motion? Oh, we're on.
All right, I'm gonna make a motion that we come out of executive session, four oh five, six A one, personnel issue at, what time is it, Jeff?
Seven sixteen.
Seven sixteen.
I'll second that. All in favor? Okay.
As we've come out, we haven't made any, any decisions. This has got to do with the transfer station application, and superintendent, I should say, the superintendent job, and we're gonna run it, we wanna run it for another week and continue to review the applications that we have on file. And hopefully by then, we'll have a third selectman to help us make this decision, so.
That's a good choice.
You know, so, for now.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, announcements?
We'll go to announcements. December first, we got a select, select, selectmen meeting at six o'clock. December second, planning board at six o'clock. December fourth, tree lighting, five thirty. December eighth, board of selectmen, six o'clock. December fifteenth, board of selectmen, six o'clock. December sixteenth, planning board, six o'clock. December twentieth, warrant finance, six o'clock. December twenty-second, board of selectmen, six o'clock, and the twenty-ninth, board of selectmen, six o'clock. You got any announcements? No?
I guess I would like to send a couple condolences out to different people to the Yeton family, Roger Yeton passed away this, this weekend. Also, Forrest Dutt passed away, so we'd like to send our.
Forrest did?
Forrest passed away, yeah, Thanksgiving.
We'd like to send our condolences to his family, and also Sid Sprague passed away. So, condolences to all the families, and really sorry to hear of all their passings.
Half week.
Yep, with that.
Okay.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
I'll second that. All in favor? Good night.
Thank you, everybody.